Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for joining us this morning for our Defense Health Agency Transformation Joint Services Town Hall. My name is Mary Chapery and I am the Team Lead for the Continuum of Resources and Education here in Hampton Roads. I would like to welcome each and every one of you as well as extend sincere gratitude to the following: Admiral Mrs. Grady, Mrs. Alicia Hudland, Vice Admiral Mrs. Brown, Lieutenant General Place, Rear Admiral Mrs. Meyer, Brigadier General Bannister, Rear Admiral Swop, Captain Brad Rosen, Ms. Charlotte Hurd, Military Liaison Center Warner's Office, Mr. David Rikersham, attending on behalf of Congressman Elaine Luriano, and Mary Ellen Gollan, President and CEO of Navy League. Thank you so much. Just in case you're not familiar with CORE or our mission, we provide mentorship for military specialists by developing programs that empower and educate families throughout this ever-changing military lifestyle. More importantly, CORE allows us to react in real time to relevant issues that are currently affecting our sailors and their families, the center of the Navy's universe. CORE is sponsored by Naval Services Family Line and is supported by Navy League Hampton Roads. If it wasn't for the partnership between Navy League and CORE, we would not be able to put on the programs that we do. So I would like to thank Rear Admiral Swop and her staff for working so diligently to make this event a success. She currently serves as the Commander of Naval Medical Forces Atlantic and Senior Market Manager, Tidewater Military Health System. We are fortunate to have her as a moderator here today, so without further ado, please welcome Rear Admiral Swop.
Good morning, everybody. So as you heard, Naval Medical Forces Atlantic, formerly known as Navy Medicine East. It's a big mouthful, but that's what I mean. So I'm going to introduce first the COs in my market. The market is a word that we use that manages all of the healthcare in Tidewater. And Tidewater goes all the way from Williamsburg to Little Creek, all the way over Oceana. I mean, if you name it, we manage the healthcare, about 390,000 people in Tidewater. Good. So, I'm going to introduce the COs first. They're going to stand and wave to you, starting with Langley, Craig, Kai. So, we're discussing, Jason Falconberry, Colonel Jim Jason Falconberry, McDonald Wallace, and Captain Uteson. And last but not least, the Medical Center at Portsmouth, Lisa Malagui, Captain Uteson. So, we have here backup General Place who I'm going to introduce. They will be answering a particular point of questions about the healthcare. The gentleman, he's going to be taken, right, General? You love that? Yeah? No. It's a privilege and an honor to have the general with us today. I've known General Place for many years. He was a being casted. There's no better person to lead the Defense Health Agency. He's our third Director of Defense Health Agency and he's a general surgeon by trade. Colorectal surgeon specialty. There's going to be a joke in your summer, folks, I can promise you. And we are privileged to have him here to join us today. Distinguished career. Thank you, General, for being here and will be able to answer questions today. Thank you so much.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Fantastic. Thanks, Admiral Swop, for that really generous introduction. She's right, I mean, we work together for caps going and in some cases, maybe that should just be left between us. So, I have some prepared remarks and most of the reason that I have prepared remarks is to try to address some of the questions that I received within the last few days, but answer them in a way that's consistent across the enterprise, across the entire military health system. That said, there'll be lots of time after for other questions to think through. There's something that I haven't addressed or I haven't answered in a way that's consistent with what your true question is about it, but feel free to have your prepared remarks to ask them again. Secondarily, there's a lot going on, so some of that I'm going to answer with "I don't know", because there isn't a plan for some things yet. Now, that can be frustrating for many people and I get that. That doesn't mean it's not important or that we won't have a plan for it or a solution for it perhaps later. This is an enormous transformation of the military health system. So I just say that as sort of a sense. Thanks, Admiral Mrs. Grady, for hosting me for this particular town hall. It's an honor and privilege truly to be here. And one of the great things about being part of the joint force is while my entire career is in the Army and now to be able to experience what happens in Navy installations and Air Force installations is truly eye-opening, because the world as I thought it is actually relatively different based on the biases that I carried with me from being an Army officer. And I've been an Army officer my entire life. I started in ROTC and then the Military's Health Profession Scholarship, so I went to civilian medical school. But from my internship in general surgery to my residency in general surgery, to my practice in general surgery, to my fellowship, it's all been in Army facilities. Until my first deployment in 2001, where I was part of a Joint Special Operations Task Force, where I was actually assigned to a group of Navy SEALs. And then my time at Long School from 2002 to 2007, small J, because no doubt about it, Joint Force at Long School Regional Medical Center, in particular, in the early aspects of First Operation Enduring Freedom and Operation Iraqia. I got four combat deployments, I don't say that to brag, just that as a surgeon, I saw horrific things in combat. And I understand what our service members go through, because I have operated on hundreds of our brothers and sisters, some of whom have died. I've experienced that. I've experienced days where my boots are soaked with blood, such that as I'm walking, there goes the most precious resource of America, the blood of America's sons and daughters, and I leave it behind as a trail. I get how important this mission is. So if anybody in this room thinks that he's a distant dear Brad, he's looking to save money and that's all he cares about, I tell you, it's not. One son is an armor officer on active duty today. He's a Bradley Fighting Vehicle guy, he's a company commander, that's his job. And his next rotation to the Korean Peninsula will be back up on the DMZ, where he's already been once. And he's one of those speedboats, if there truly is conflict on the Korean Peninsula. Another daughter, former active duty, now Reserve, a Singapore officer, who's done her tour of duty in Afghanistan. That's all of them authentic. I get what it's like to have your precious baby daughter in a combat zone. I've lived that. My son was an Army officer. Three of my grandkids get taken care of in military facilities. My wife and I still get care of military facilities and I got, based on my rank and the fact there is no other place for me to go, very soon I'm going to be a retiree as well. I get all this. And when I make decisions, I make decisions based on my experiences in combat. And I make decisions based on my experience of leading hospitals that I've commanded before, of regions that I've commanded before, and then understanding bureaucracy that exists in the Pentagon. So I give you all that as a sense. What I'm looking for really is quality and access. That's what I'm looking for. And we have to be able to do that in a way that makes sense financially. But what I'm looking for is how do we optimize the quality of care that we deliver? Whether we deliver it inside the institutions that the COs that Admiral Swop already introduced? How we do that inside? My other responsibility is to manage the TRICARE network and the interaction between our facilities and what exists in the TRICARE network. Readiness. We talk about it a lot. When it comes to being prepared for anything, sometimes it's hard to define what that really means. Because being ready for one thing may not mean that you're ready for other things. So it's a somewhat amorphous description, and yet all of our senior leaders talk about readiness almost all the time. Now, part of readiness can be modernization. We have to get better at things so that we're ready for future conflict, we're ready for future fights. But some of that's hard to define, and in particular, what's the medical requirements that go behind it? And then what's the sustainment tale from the healthcare delivery aspect that goes along with that readiness? I'm telling you that it's much more apparent the demands of readiness outside of DC than it is inside of DC. So you just have to be aware of that. Now, our job, mine and Admiral Grady's quite frankly from here, is frequent interactions in the Pentagon and on Capitol Hill is to bridge that gap between awareness and understanding, which are different about what readiness really means. But for medics, it means being prepared for any environment. Surgeons prepared for combat. Family physicians ready for disease and non-bio injuries. Combat stress control, behavioral health elements, understanding the milieu that we're going into. All of us aware of the specific infectious diseases that are endemic to particular areas. It means understanding women's health, both from a preparedness to deploying and women's health issues that are in the operational environment. It's not necessarily about obstetricians and gynecologists, but it is about women's health. And how do we understand the demands in the peacetime environment here in the United States and the readiness implications for women's health that go into the operational environment? And how do you bridge that gap? It also means ensuring that our medical personnel stay at the top of their game, that we're ready for what we need to do here at the American standard of care in American facilities and the standard that our military expects us to deliver in the operational environment. And the sustainment responsibilities, the platform responsibilities of our hospitals, medical centers in particular, to deliver on that maintenance of skills, cognitive and technical bulk. It's a complex world. Healthcare is a complex industry. If you look at America, just 75 years ago, the majority, the huge majority of physicians were general practitioners. In fact, I remember as an eight-year-old, I had my appendix taken out, not by a general surgeon, certainly not by a colorectal surgeon, but by a general practitioner in rural South Dakota. America's not like that anymore. We demand specialty care and we're extraordinarily interested in subspecialty care. And so the requirements that that leaves us here in America versus the operational requirements are at odds. Our responsibility as military healthcare leaders is to bridge that gap to be able to deliver on both promises. Now, you might be wondering, how does the DHA come into this? Well, several years ago, the Secretary of Defense made a decision, and that is we can better support our mission to the line leaders and our support to military families by being more joined. Now, most of the things that happened based on that decision six or seven years ago are things that were happening behind the scenes. It's how we manage TRICARE, it's how we do military construction, it's how we manage the pharmacy benefit, in particular, express scripts and manage the contract for that. There's a whole bunch of other things that are happening behind the scenes that you don't even know is happening in the joint environment at the Defense Health Agency. But that's good, right? You should know that things are different, only that they're better. That's the bottom line to you. But not everything is happening behind the scenes. In particular, I've noticed over my travel responsibilities over the last year that when I talk to beneficiaries, when I talk to staff, that there's a lot of challenges. Now, the great news about our military leaders is they solve problems and they solve them. They solve them with local solutions, which is good up to a point. But the problem is, because everyone did things their own way, neither staff nor patients really bothered to learn a system, because there wasn't a system. It was just a local solution to local problems. How do we manage referrals? How do we navigate the system? In fact, how about if you ask any, or most, I won't say any, most of our practitioners at their three facilities, and you ask them, "I have a referral for X." You put it, fill in the blank. How does that work? That practitioner will tell you, "I don't know." And the fact of the matter is, because we PCS, why should I learn it here? Because it may be different for different specialties. It may be different between healthcare referrals versus imaging referrals versus laboratory referrals. It may be different for all of them. So there's no incentive for our staff to learn it, because there's no system. So the first thing, the first thing that I'm looking at is changing those patient-facing administrative functions. It has to change, because right now it's confusing, it's frustrating, and clearly we can do better. I'm going to give you a number that, to the best of my knowledge, is still accurate. When it comes to referrals that end up going out to the TRICARE network, almost 30% of them are never activated. 30%. Now, part of that may be because they're inappropriate referrals. We really don't need specialty care or specialty evaluation to whatever the problem happens to be. And I'll admit to that. But my basic belief is a significant percentage of the referrals are not activated because the person involved wasn't able to figure out how to get there. That's not a system. Instead, it's local solutions. Commanders and their staff solving problems that they have solved a particular issue, but they didn't solve the system. We're here fixing it. The Defense Health Agency was established and our responsibilities have grown in order to standardize across our system. That's the whole purpose. It isn't to eliminate the culture of the Navy in areas that are predominantly Navy, and it never will be. Similarly, it's not to eliminate the culture of the Air Force for areas that are predominantly Air Force. That's not what this should be about. It's about having a system and understanding the joint perspective to better deliver on readiness, to better deliver on quality, to better understand the family situation and deliver to our families. Now, I also have a responsibility to eliminate administrative complexity. Last week, I had a conference call with every single MTF commander and director across the military health system, and I made what I just discussed with you, the priority to all of them. So all of them should understand, that's what we're trying to fix. Now, once we can get those sorts of things fixed, there may be other things that pull it to standardize, where standardization will be effective. But maybe don't always think about it, healthcare is an individual thing. When there's a particular problem, it needs to be addressed in a way that's unique to that particular person. But the processes should still be the same. Just like every pilot who flies, the conditions of that flight will be different every single time. But that doesn't mean they don't use standard checklists in the way that we pre-flight, in-flight, and post-flight those missions in. React to those conditions based on the conditions, but the standardization still exists. It's also not to say that we don't have challenging decisions to make about where the military health system will be delivering care inside of our facilities and where perhaps we will no longer be delivering healthcare inside those facilities. Sometime, in the next few weeks, and I really don't know when it will be, the Department is going to make official a decision that they're making on re-scoping some facilities across the military health system. In some locations, that may very well mean an increase in scope of services. And in many locations, the majority of the locations where a decision will be made, it will be a decision to reduce the scope of services at particular locations. This is my responsibility. No matter where that is, and no matter what the decision, the quality of healthcare delivered, the access to healthcare delivered must still be the same. High-quality American healthcare with the same access to care responsibilities that you expect from us inside of our facilities. You need to be able to do it in a way where time and not one patient is disadvantaged from the decision of the Department. Now, I can't absolutely promise perfection in all of that, but that is the stated goal of the Department. And in fact, in the discussions that the Assistant Secretary of Defense for Health Affairs and I had with the Secretary as we talked through this, that was his primary concern. I made the mistake about it, though. The Department is interested in maximizing money to go to modernization projects, to lead that to the national defense plans, the national security strategy, the national defense management. And we, military medicine, we, the Defense Health Agency, are in support of that strategy. So as the Department makes decisions on where to prioritize monies, then my responsibility is to act to those priorities and within the defense of program, put resources against the most important priorities and continue to make those function directly. But detailing the way to doing it, we are a supporting organization to the Secretary's mission across the country. Bottom line, I love what I do. I love my career as a physician in the military. I love my career as an administrator. And I'm proud to serve and I'm proud to be the Director of the Defense Health Agency. And that probably comes from the delivery of healthcare inside our installations. It comes with extraordinary staff, and I have the privilege to lead. And the out-of-the-box thinking that comes from these leaders, as they are solving problems. And my responsibility then is to not allow those local problems that have solutions to remain local solutions, is to inculcate them across the enterprise, if they truly are the best solution. So that standardization makes sense for all of us. Now, for the right reason of this town hall, I'll tell you, there's no issue that's too controversial to me. There's nothing that's too personal for me. If I can't answer it, then there are some others here in the audience that maybe will answer it. If none of us can answer it, then we'll take it back to the Defense Health Awards, and we'll get a solution and we'll get it back to Admiral Grady's staff so that those particular answers can be distributed here locally. The only requirement I'll give is if you want to throw me in with us, all me names or in front of me, that's okay. I can defend myself reasonably well. But please don't say anything discouraging about anybody else who doesn't have the privilege of a microphone to be able to defend themselves. And if you don't know who it is, then just put it all on me and I'll take responsibility for all of it. So with that, I want your questions out there.
So, with any of the changes that you're referring to this morning, you know that there's a high likelihood that we have family members and retirees that may be going out to the network for their care. How does the DHA plan to assure the quality and access for all those beneficiaries that could potentially be hundreds of thousands?
Sure. I think with the number that you're alluding to, the range of potentials could be anywhere from a few thousand to as many as perhaps 200,000. So the range of options that we gave to the Secretary would lead that to their potential. The majority of that would be retirees and retired family members. It would be a very small number, a real number, if less, of family members. It should be zero uniform personnel. So for the scope and scale, that's what I want to follow you through. My responsibility to action, any decision that the Secretary makes, is to go within those priorities that he gave you. And when I want you to do this, whatever you do, maintain high quality of care and maintain access. Now, in some locations, that's hard. So I'm not nearly familiar with any location, but I'm going to pick Clonan Falls. Areas that I'm familiar with would be Fort Irwin, further out in the desert, near Clonan Falls. Or I'll even give you other locations, like we euphemistically in Army called Fort Austin Woods, Fort Irwin. So each of those are deserts in some form or fashion. And you may think, "God, Ron, it rains all the time, there's just one, how could you say that's a desert?" Well, it's a healthcare desert. Depending on the specialty, so I'm going to mix in generalities. But more than 90% of all specialties within the drive time limit of Fort Irwin are in that. And so when you say, "Okay, we're in for a lot of the networks," there is no more network. There's no more capability in that network. There's no providers that we can monitor that haven't already made an contract. So that's the nice thing we give to the Secretary. Sir, if you were to do this, and from a record form of options, the Secretary will decide, right? Because there's been a lot of those that you have on the Secretary's list. And that wasn't one of the options that we sent to him. But if he decided to do that, "Sir, if you take capability away, then we have to drive to Columbia, we have to drive to St. Louis and get specialty care." And that's two hours and hours away. That's our implication for that decision. So when I say deserts, like Clonan Falls or Fort Irwin, there can be healthcare deserts as well. From my knowledge of Fort Irwin, the world's longest gulvet city. If you've ever been near Fort Irwin, you understand Barstow is where I tend to go through, and you go 43, I think it's around 43,000 or one road, another one, more roads coming into them. One long road, and at the end of it is Fort Irwin. There's nothing within there except Barstow. Barstow's a city that, you pick one word, city, village, whatever, about 40,000, 45,000 people. How much healthcare capability do you think is there? Almost none. So that's the type of thing that we're giving to the Secretary, this is our application to the city. In general, those areas, I shouldn't say that. The huge abundance of the areas that are on the peninsula that the Secretary to make de-scoping actions have robust networks just outside of gate and the peninsula. And so we believe it is a doable thing, the location that we gave to the Secretary, that we can actually contract for primary care, that we can actually deliver specialty care outside the gate for those things that we think may be de-scooped from specialty care perspective. Those are the options that we gave the Secretary. My responsibility then is to implement that for whatever it is that we decide. Does anyone have your questions?
Morning. So, I'm also a disabled vet, and if you run into one of these roadblocks out in the system with referrals, medications, and you go for a patient advocacy, and you have a problem with hospital, provider, you call TRICARE, TRICARE says, "Sorry, we can't help you." Call the hospital, well, not all hospitals or providers have a patient advocacy. So, on medication, you call express scripts, they have no one that can help you. So there's nobody to reach out to who's in the medical profession who can help you resolve something that your doctor has told you needs to be done. There's got to be a way similar to the military healthcare system where you got somebody on your side to help you navigate that referral or that medication.
Yes, I would disagree with anything that you said. My personal belief is that we do have those capabilities, but certainly within the MTFs, if there are some MTFs that don't have patient advocacy, then you're right, then within our markets or areas that we have it set up, there should be a single point contract. But one of the challenges is it's not standardized the way that we do it. The way the patient advocacy system works at different locations is all different. So when I'm talking about patient-facing administrative services, actually, that's one of the things that I'm talking about. How is it, in fact, webpages? I mean, we have great artists at individual locations for our webpages, and God bless them. But how does that help you when you're trying to navigate with that young webpage, when you're going from installation to installation? So I get the desire to be artistic, I do. But for me, the way we support you isn't about being more artistic with our webpages, it's making the webpage understandable and having it be the same, so that once you learn how our webpage works, it's the same everywhere you go. Does that make sense to all of you? Well, you'd be surprised, a bunch of our computer guys saying, "Oh, no, you understand, I'm better at this than everybody else." Yeah, but it ain't about you. So I agree with you. So from a webpage perspective, one of the patient-facing standardized patient-facing things is here on the webpage is the place for you to show us what your issue is. That's the first. The second thing is standardize the way that we work processes within our patient advocacy system. Sadly, at least for you, Humana, Health, and Express Scripts all do have those positions inside their systems. And every time that we ask for the data on them, they show us the hundreds or even thousands of people who contacted them and all the things that they've solved. If they're really not solving problems, then we need to know that, because that's a requirement of the contracts. These are multi-billion dollar contracts. My guess is that's not a surprise to all of you, that every single one of those three companies I just named have multi-billion, single-year contracts with us.
Well, it's fine if the problem is within their purview.
All of it's within my purview.
But if it crosses the boundary between the express scripts and provider.
Sure.
Or two providers.
Sure. I would disagree with that. Again, one of the problems that Defense Health Agency and this transition from Navy MTFs and Air Force MTFs and Army MTFs into just joint MTFs is to solve that problem and integrate the single Defense Health Agency with the TRICARE system. So instead of making four systems, Army, Navy, Air Force, and TRICARE, it's one system and it's all integrated. That's the problem that the agency was designed to solve. That's why, if you read what the Congress wrote in 2016 into the 2017 National Defense Administration Act, there's two reasons for it. The first was to optimize readiness across the force, and the second is to solve that problem. That's how we're doing this. So if we're getting better at that, then this whole transformation is working. If that's making it worse, then this transformation is a bad idea. Those are the problems that we're trying to solve. Thanks for the question. Yes, ma'am.
Good morning. My name is Mary Aldrich, I'm a independent. I am concerned with some of the changes and how they're affecting our family members. One of those being the lack of a family facility in the city of Norfolk currently. They just closed out Soul Point, no more family members there. Then I have been sent out to Virginia Beach. My children have been sent to Chesapeake, which means I can't get a single facility appointment for all of us at one time. Now, specifically when this happened, I said, "How does this help me drive 30 minutes for my primary care?" Because primary care is either once a year, okay, that sounds to me bad, or urgent. My kid is sick and needs to be seen. "Oh, well, they got so many more appointments, no problem." Case in point, my daughter comes home from college, sick. They're recent. She comes home on December 11th. I call, first day in the morning, "Are there any same-day appointments?" "No." So I have to wait until Wednesday, Thursday, December 12th to get her in, get a nine o'clock appointment. I leave my very sick kid at 8:30 for a nine o'clock appointment. I get there at nine o'clock. I'm technically late, I'm supposed to be there 15 minutes early. We wait 30 minutes to get in to see the doctor. We are now out of the house for an hour. We are waiting in that room for another 30, 45 minutes to see the doctor, get everything done. My daughter is now diagnosed with mono strep infection and sinus infection, which wasn't caught at her school health center. I get it, but now she needs antibiotics. She's also been out of the house for two hours. And now I need to sit there 55 minutes on their pharmacy, 55 minutes waiting to get your prescription. So I say, we are still half an hour away from home. I know I can use tools for our prescription. So I drive home, pick up some snacks along the way, because she's a little hungry, get over to Soul's, stop there first. Soul's doesn't have any working, like, mechanism to tell you how long your wait is going to be, it's a line. I got to stand in the line, and now standing in the line for my prescription with my sick kid sitting in another waiting room, hopefully infecting more people. And by the time I get home, it is 12:45. My daughter was out of the house for nearly four hours with mono strep infection and sinus infection. If I had gone to Soul's and I had seen that line need so long, and I just had to drive seven minutes up the road, and I got seen right away, and I saw the line for the prescription, I would have booked her right back home, and I would have dropped her off and said, I'll pick it up. And that would have been super easy and possible. But by the time you're standing in that line, and you're looking, and you're waiting, and you're like, okay, I don't know how long this is going to be, you don't want to get out of the line. But now, I'm lucky. My husband works, and I have a substitute job, like, I can take that day off. It's fine, we mostly rely on his income. But you know what? There are guys in his command whose wives work hourly. She's now just lost four hours of pay to take her scoop, her child, to the doctor, when it could have been a lot less if she didn't have that extra hour of travel and it didn't solve the access issue of not having enough appointments, because now all those family members that were at Soul's are now either stuck out in Virginia Beach or Chesapeake, and now they've got no appointments there. It's, in order to be mission-ready, you have to be family-ready. You can't be worried about what's going on with your family back home, or what's going to happen if your kid gets sick, or that, oh, if my one kid gets sick, I can't bring my kids with me to the doctor, so now I've got to be a babysitter and lose my hourly income and all this. What are we doing to make sure that our families have access to care that is not only good and high-quality, but actually usable?
So with that, that's a great prelude. I'm not sure I can answer all of that, in part because the names that you're using, I don't know of any. I'm assuming those are the names of clinics, but I haven't even heard that. But the problem that you're bringing up, I don't need to be walking away from you, sorry about that. The problem that, yeah, but it's your question, so I fundamentally believe that I can answer you. I agree with you. I agree with you. But our system is set up as a system to be able to solve problems across the enterprise. It's, we're going to take parts of this to solve that problem. So the local commander is going to take from whatever else that she has, resources to solve that problem, we're going to make a problem somewhere else, as opposed to taking a look across the enterprise. So in some form or fashion, one of the reasons for, okay, why do we have enrollments in many locations where we don't have the right number of staff for that enrollment? That's based on which? Now, we're all optimistic, right? That's how you get to be a leader, you're optimistic you can solve the problem. But I've been a leader in military medicine for about 20 years, and then I've been a certain officer for almost 35 years. My experience has been that we don't ever solve a local problem. And additionally, we get more primary care staff in, whether it's physicians or practitioners or administrative staff, person staff, et cetera, and we lose it somewhere else. We never, ever get to where we think we're going to be.
Do you personally think it's reasonable to ask a family member to drive 30 minutes for the primary care?
Yes, I do think that's reasonable.
Really?
Yeah, I do.
Would the sick kid keep him in the car?
Well...
Because that's what's happening to the family members. So I gotta tell you, if a family member sits at home with the sick kid keeping in the car, possibly with another kid sitting next to it, now getting sick, would that sit in the car, keep him with it?
So this is what I'll tell you. So for basic primary care, yeah, I do think that's reasonable, but what you're really describing is urgent care. So if instead of the challenge is, and I'm going to make stuff up because I don't think about that clinical encounter, I'll make it up. But some of the fever 103, who is vomiting every two minutes, who's significantly dehydrated with a headache, et cetera, to me, that's not, that's not primary care, that's urgent care. And one of the reasons that the Congress gave us and all of us the opportunity to have limited access to urgent care is that can solve that problem. I don't know if urgent care facilities are here, so maybe it's not okay in this community because there's not urgent care available either.
I find that intriguing, because if you need, you can eat a tonsillectomy because your kid's had struck throat, you, a certain number of times, you have to hit that struck throat in a year for your kid to get a tonsillectomy. But if I go to urgent care every time my kid gets struck throat because he's got a high fever, how is my primary care doctor definitely getting all that information stuff? And I need the referral for the tonsillectomy because my kid's had struck seven times this year.
No, I don't disagree with that. So one of the reasons that I mentioned to you that's to have four systems, it should be one system, since that doesn't matter where you or your child go, that we have that inside of our system, so that we know about it.
But if I go to urgent care, it's not in the military system. There's no military urgent care in the city of Norfolk.
No, I understand that, but my responsibility is to make sure that from the contractor perspective, that every time you or your child are seen in that urgent care center, that clinical encounter makes a way into you or your child's health practice, so that we do have that system. And while it's not perfect now, it's better, we have way more inside our system now than we did five years ago. We have, I'll say we're infinitely more inside our system now than we did 10 years ago, because we do regular kinds of stuff. I'm not here saying they told them some kind of uniforms, because they did, I get that, but the goal that we're looking for aren't to solve those problems. I'm not disagreeing with you. I say that. I got a wife, I got three kids, and I have to raise them all inside the L.J. Hospital. I got three grandkids in the L.J. Hospital. How would it matter for my grandkids? I want some grandkids. How would it matter for your kids next year than it is now? I agree with all those things that you're saying, but the challenge that I want all of you to appreciate is it can't just work here, it has to work everywhere, so that where you go, where your next assignment is, it continues to work for you. And in some places, primary care is going to be the answer, and some of that's, well, you know, I think I sprained my ankle a week ago, I didn't go in because I thought it was going to be okay, but I still have ankle pain. Is it okay to ride 30 minutes for that? It is, isn't it? Yes, it is. And if the issue is, gosh, you know, I think I got the flu, and I thought I was going to get better, I had these symptoms for four, five days, it's just not getting better. Is it okay to ride 30 minutes for that? I think it is. But the example that you used, no, I don't expect you to ride 30 minutes for that. And no, I don't think you should have. I think you should have gone to the urgent care center. Now, that may be wrong of me to think that, but I'm just saying...
If you need the appointment, then we need to fix the appointment process. You can make the appointment, you make the appointment, but they just say, this is what you do. They don't say, you know what, you sound like you should go to urgent care. Somebody should advise, TRICARE.
Amen. And that's, that's how we have to fix that part of the system, for how do we give advice to people who say, look, I'm not a healthcare guy, this is what's going on for a second? And that's the navigation part, where when I talk about standardizing patient-facing administrative things, that's what I mean by that. Right now, we don't recall it for that, because, who the hell, sorry, who are you going to call? Right? We don't have a system for that. You just sort it out on your own. That's exactly what you try to make. But the way that we're going to, we have to do it is standardize across the system, so even if it's, if it's here, or your next to the assignment, or the following to the assignment, whether it's the same number or not, we don't care. But our website's going to be the same place, this is the number you call, this is how you get advice, they'll tell you where to go, or the things happening to you. That's the goal, ladies and gentlemen. I'm not disagreeing, that's not broken now, it is broken now. And that's how I'm saying that we have to fix it. I'm not confident it'll be perfect next summer, but I am confident it's going to get better theoretically, such that, I don't know, a year and a half, two and a half, three years from now, you are going to see significant improvements about the way we handle the exact situation that you just mentioned. So who the pharmacy for? I agree with you. I mean, I get tell you times I've had people say to me, yeah, man, I've waited so long in your pharmacy, I've tried that Saturday. Well, except that, except that we actually follow the exact times, and that's one of the reasons we make pull the dead tickets and sorry, man, I don't know how long it lasts. I know the least amount of time I know how long this is going to last. And more than 30 minutes is too long, I'll grant that. Less than eight minutes is irresponsible, because of all the safety stuff that's actually happening behind the network that you all don't even know about, and thank God it's there. So, because that's the poison, right? If used incorrectly, that's the poison. So we want to make sure that whether it's for allergic allergies, or allergic interactions, or all those things, all that safety stuff is there. That's all I'm saying. I'm with you. I'm so sorry that your family experienced that, I am, and we owe you better. That's why I'm talking about what I'm talking about, okay? Thank you.
Good morning, gentlemen. I'm Captain Will Palmer for Military SEAL营 Command, and representing the reserves here and have a question for you. The SEAL营 component is provided 100% by reserve personnel. Does DHA alignment provide access to reserve component National Guard for evaluation and readiness when not in active duty orders?
Yeah, but you know, that's a complex question. And authorities are the key part of that, and what amount of money goes into paying that. We are fundamentally in support of that. There are some locations where we have existing MOAs that allow us to do that. My position again, the same decade more than I said before, standardization. We have to have a standardized process about how we're going to do it and what we're going to do. I fundamentally support it. If our, if our purpose is a medically-ready force, that means all component medically-ready force, right? So yes, the DHA supports it. Some law or administration, department policy has to change to allow that to happen. We're advocating for it. I recommend that through the reserve component, you continue to advocate for as well, that is our position. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
My concern is reduction of clinical staff, which would be baseline, which is really need to be, which is appointment, minutes, things like that. I get that. My question is, what has been done to optimize continued skill growth and maintenance? Because a lot of times, with this, where you see a wide variety of agents, and see processes, chronic issues, and if you're teaching, if you're only treating a logical group of people, they're not going to see that, so you're not going to retain talented doctors, nurses, and corpsmen who are growing stagnates in their career because they're only seeing a logical, healthy individual. How are you going to optimize and reduce that for these people?
Well, I...
Because I asked my husband, so that's a challenge.
Yes.
He has to stay, then maybe I can choose a different doctor wherever, I'm not happy. He can't. So we have people who are excited, he...
Well, I understand the challenge, and thanks for bringing it up. I worry about that as a no longer practicing physician, but someone who's still licensed, still privileged, who still maintains a continuing medical education to practice. So I'm very aware of that. But I'm going to flip it around just a little bit. We didn't have a good way of ensuring that before. Right? I mean, ladies, we don't have a good way of measuring most of that right now. The department recognizes that, and the service recognizes that. So there are negotiations at work perhaps, discussions at work that we're having now is the services put the requirements, what is the requirement for this particular specialty? What is the requirement for currency competency across the skill set? And then put that out in the hands of the DHA director to either be able to deliver that, or be able to sign a partnership in the student community where you can deliver that. But I understand what you want, but the challenge with putting everybody out, that makes it way more expensive.
We have a program for trauma surgeons to be able to go to really, really physical care, and that program is not...
Well, yeah, I don't know about the specific program that you're talking about. I'll just say this, it's better for the entire team if those requirements can be met inside the direct care system, inside of our medical centers, in our hospitals, and in our homes. So, and the reason it's better is that we maintain our currency as a medical force and we're providing very expensive healthcare all the same time. Because if you do it differently, then you got to buy hope. So my goal, and the goal of the DHA leadership, is to find ways that we can do hope, but in order to do that, you have to know what the requirements are. Now, in healthcare, we're not good at requirements, I always tell you. The rest of the military, it's a requirements-based military, which is why we do our funding, the way we do it on the program objective memorandum, which is a multi-year way of funding things, but healthcare is a year of execution process, right? Because people get sick this year, we have to pay for it this year, et cetera, and then project significant conflict and implications for this year, therefore, I'm just not going to do it because of course I'm going to be in the pound. That's irresponsible. And so we have to, we have to figure out how to get better at the way the military thinks of things. And one of those is about requirements. Okay, so I'm a general surgeon. What's my requirement? So I said, I am capable both to maintain my certification as a board-certified general surgeon and a board-certified colorectal surgeon, that's one of my requirements. My second requirement is, well, I've got to be able to do the things that you need to do on the battlefield as a general surgeon. And to operate on the battlefield as a general surgeon, I mean, operate on skin and it's complex. That's a joke, which means everything. But that's not what I do here in America as a colorectal surgeon. And so how do I balance this amount of my time as a colorectal surgeon, but still, I feel I operate on the face sometimes, I feel I operate on the chest sometimes, I feel I operate on the extremities sometimes? And how do I maintain my currency, my competency to be deployable for that skill set? Those are requirements. And we're just now getting to the, to the elements of what that means for multiple specialties. So the combat casualty care specialties, across the system, we've got a reasonable start, not saying it's perfect, but a reasonable start about what that looks like. But we need to do that for air guns, we need to do that for respiratory dairies, we do that for lab technicians, for blood technicians, or you name the name. But we haven't in the past defined the requirements. That's what we're doing now. And then if we can't deliver that at a particular clinic, then we say, oh, this is not a good place for this particular practitioner. We need to put some time at least, because we still need to do that clinic work, but some time in another location to be able to deliver that currency and competency for those requirements, to keep their currency in their specialty and to keep their currency in their operational operations. Does that make sense to you? Okay. That's where we're going.
My concern because the client side is huge times as we broaden.
Yes, yes. And where we can, and do it inside and keep currency and competency against both our state side licensing and privileges and the operational force, boy, that's an economy when it all works out. And then we have to figure out ways where it doesn't work out, how we can help us solve that. Now, you're welcome.
Glad you're listening, y'all. Thank you for being here, first of all. I have a multi-part question.
Keep in mind, I'm a general surgeon, I'm very limited, mentally capacity, man.
I understand that Jacksonville was going to be the test case for a DHA transformation.
Very likely.
I'd like to know what percentage of that has been put through the transformation process and what your feedback from the families has been. Secondly, I'd like to know what the rubric is for determining whether a market can bear an influx of prime members out onto the economy. Is it just based on number of physicians in the area, number of specialties, or are you actually getting buy-in from medical groups that they are willing to take the influx?
Okay. All right, sir, testing limits of my ability to remember. So the first part, from a Jacksonville perspective, Jacksonville Naval Hospital and supporting clinics from Key West to Albany transitioned into the Defense Health Agency on the 1st of October of 2018. So they've been with us for 17 months or so. The challenges have been several-fold. One of the challenges has to do with resourcing. This may surprise you, or perhaps not, the Army, the Navy, and the Air Force use different programs for resourcing. use different programs for resourcing. And each of the services are absolutely sure that only they can have the keys to the money. So when that transition happened, now we have to work through the Navy to handle resourcing for Jacksonville Naval Hospital and supporting clinics. Well, that was kind of a challenge. We worked through it, but that was one of the key areas. The second aspect was each of the services have made some recent decisions about changing some of the staff that were assigned to hospitals to assign to operational units and then with duty at the hospital. Well, each of those decisions almost invariably have meant more time away from the hospital than it did people. And so that's a challenge now for what we thought was access and was going to be is now different because the staffing is different than we anticipated it being. Along those lines, the deployments of the COMFIR took a significant amount of staff out of Jackson, out of the places, but out of Jacksonville and dealing with that. Primary care last spring and summer in Jacksonville was horrific. I think at one point, the total number of over-enrolled dead fishers was in the neighborhood of 15,000, which meant getting access to primary care extraordinarily changed. And then that led to partnerships with downtown clinics that significantly aligned on urgent care centers around that sort of thing. In the intervening time, the number of current practitioners inside the facility has almost returned to full. I've been lying if I told you exactly what it is or not, but very, very close to full staffing again. So those are some of the challenges that we had to work through. I think that the majority of those things have been successful. The money part's still the challenge for us because it's supposed to be my responsibility to handle the financing of that particular location, and yet it goes to the Navy to be able to do it, and I don't have the capability of the Navy systems. So it's very difficult for me to hold that commanding officer accountable for because I really owe it to myself, just as a man. Now, ultimately, the Navy is a medicine, is transitioning to the same financial system that the DHA uses and Army medicine uses. So that problem is being solved. That's just one of the particular areas. I told you I couldn't remember. What was the second issue? Oh, determinate, yeah, yeah. So first is, is there 200% of the available capacity in the network for whatever that thing is? So whether it's primary care, specialty care, at the baseline, is there 200% available of what we're currently using? Is that available there? The second part of it is working through the managed care support contractor. So whether that's Human Health Net Federal Services or International SOS for OCAAS. What is their, what's their discussion with the subcontractors that they have, the outpatient doctors or hospitals, et cetera? How do they negotiate with them and what do they estimate the capacity is of that increased demand on the economy? What is their estimation of whether it would work or not? And then third is, where we've done something similar in that community before, this is what we thought was going to happen. Here's what happened. How close were they? Those are the three parts of the rubric that we look at and the potential of a location. Is there capability for us to de-scope some level of care from inside the NGA to outside the NGA? Does that make sense or?
It makes sense. I guess like how much that is locked in place before you pull the trigger and send these folks out trying to buy PCM?
Yeah, so we're erring on the side of caution. Ladies and gentlemen, if you've got the implication for me that hey, at a cut, whatever, the decision time, then all of a sudden, everything's gone, we're just moving things away. This process is going to take several years. So it'll be a multi-step process of, okay, then we think this place, we think this place is going to have this amount of number. Now we go to the contractor, okay, show us, show us, not just what your directory is, because we all know that directory is okay. And the latest number that I have across both systems, health management is just a little bit more than 75% of the directory is actually accurate, which is better than the rest of the country, by the way. Most insurance companies, it's in the 60s, 65%. So the fact that it's 75% is actually pretty good. But that said, at least 25% is wrong. So it's no kidding. Go to those contractors and say, all right, you think there's this much capacity? Show me for primary care. Show me for otometery. Show me for cardiology. Show me for pulmonary. Show me for pediatric endocrinology. Whatever it is that we're delivering inside that facility now, go to the contractor, show me specifically, okay? And this is the timeline. And we'll go to the community and be very transparent about it. This is the plan. This is how long we think it's going to take. These are the specialties that we think that there are. This is about what we think is going to happen. So that there's feedback then, so that when the contractor tells us one thing and the experiences that our families have is different, then we'll be able to say, hey, you promised us this, the experience is that, how do we rationalize the pain? That's the plan of action and milestones that will be delivered at each individual location that this may be happening. You're welcome. That's a great question. Thank you. I should have said that in my opening comments. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I'm going to piggyback off the basic first question that you were asked. So I work for the IU Health Network, and we will be, my husband and I are actually spending the next three years back in Indiana, or hopefully still be working out of duty. So obviously, I would prefer physicians within the IU Health Network to be my PCM. There are hardly any physicians within the IU Health Network that contract with TRICARE Prime. And that's such a major health network. So I guess my question is, how much of an effort is going to be made to get contracts with these major health organizations? Particularly in Indiana, you know, there isn't, there isn't, you know, treatment facilities. So you have to go civilian, but there isn't nothing available.
Yeah, and that's really the nature of the problem across the non-territorial sites. And I don't disagree with that. When I talk about health deserts, some because there's just no capacity there, some others just no willingness there. I don't know a lot about the Indiana, Indiana force or Indiana part of the network. I am familiar with the National Capital area because my last job was managing all of the national capital. And one of the things that struck me and continues to strike me, there's a significant requirement for behavioral. So I'm going to use this as an example. And this may not surprise you, but there are thousands of psychiatrists in Washington, DC. Thank you. Thanks, Eric. I mean, it's sort of a little entendre, right? But there are thousands of psychiatrists in Washington, DC. Let me ask you this question, and it can be rhetorical if you want. Nobody wants to shout out and answer. What percentage of psychiatrists in the Washington, DC area do you think are cash-only psychiatrists? How do you know that? Yeah. The number is just shy of 80%. It's about 79%. But 80%, 80% of psychiatrists in DC are cash-only. Now, my guess for the reason is that nobody wants to know that they're being seen by psychiatrists in Washington, DC. And so the psychiatrists are using that environment to be cash-only, to be able to do that. Which means for us to use an insurance-like plan, TRICARE, that means there's only 20% that are even possible in the network because they have to be willing to take an insurance-like thing. TRICARE is not an insurance. But it's an insurance-like thing. And what percentage of that now 20% that are available in DC, what percentage take TRICARE? Half of them do. So 10% of the total psychiatric population in DC is available for us.
So do you think that part of the reason a lot of civilian corporations, civilian private practices do not take TRICARE, particularly TRICARE Prime, is because they don't get paid much? I mean, it's equal to or less than Medicare?
Yes, that's a fact.
They'll take Medicare because, you know, government basically says, you know, we need to take care of our older population.
So what the government says, if we're going to take any of those, any federal monies at all, then you must accept Medicare Medicare. That's the requirement. So all these psychiatrists that I mentioned, one of the reasons they're cash-only is because they don't want to live on Medicare. And by doing that, they charge whoever they want, and that's just a fact. Once you start accepting those sorts of things, then you must accept Medicare. I'll give you another difference. The federal law, I think it's law. I don't think it's departmental policy. So that's a caveat there. I think it's law. Captain, am I right? That Medicare rate is our CMA. That law is our policy.
That is law, that professional policy.
Right, law. Law says that the most that we can pay with TRICARE is Medicare. Almost every place across the country, what we actually pay is less than Medicare. You just all have to know that. And that's law. The VA, on the other hand, their floor is Medicare, and they almost never pay Medicare rates. They pay Medicare plus. So in the military health system, TRICARE is almost always Medicare minus. The VA pays Medicare plus. So we rely on the patriotism of American healthcare system. So that's a fact.
So does the DOD go back to our elected officials and say, hey, DOD changes the law to provide better for?
No. In fact, that is not the position. Again, I'm not throwing the secretary in the box. I'm not. He's made a strategic decision that says, we want healthcare to be less expensive. We want to put that money into other things in the national defense strategy. And he's, he believes that through leaders like me, that we can have relationships with the rest of America and utilize that patriotism to allow them to accept, well, sir, I'm digging a hole here. I'm hoping I'm not stepping out. Okay, yes, ma'am. I understand the law. So it's not just the secretary either, it's the Congress. Ladies and gentlemen, it's who we elected. They told us to do it this way. So we're doing it that way. Okay. So before I get to you, so I never really got to the Indiana part. I'm going to take that on. If there's specific things about the Indiana, Captain, if we can look into that particular market.
Yes, sir.
I'm willing to get more information back to you. Okay, okay. All right, let's go and do that again. Yes, sir.
Morning, sir. Captain Harper, sir. As we, as the Enterprise rolls out its genesis, we are discovering some potentially significant challenges with keeping connectivity with our field units like ship-like departments. And although there is a solution in the works with JOMA, it's likely years away from deployment. I wonder if you could comment on some ideas maybe the DHA could help bridge that gap between the activity issue on the ship, your fellow to have that solution.
Yeah. So the real question that is asking me is, how do you, how do you better integrate the electronic health record that we have in our stateside clinics with the operational units? His specific question is on the ship, but really it could be onboard a C-17 that's evacuating Stratimac. It could also be in our operational Army or Marine Corps units where we have units in the field. It's the same question everywhere. So I'm going to broaden to the joint environment. The first element is MEDCOY, which is a medical community of interest, which means nothing to all of you, but I'll explain it to you this way. It's an enclave. Now, those of you who are not IT people, maybe I'm still speaking French for you. But an enclave really is, if you think about a fence and what's inside the fence and what's outside the fence. And the way that we have it now, these are the services and healthcare, et cetera, have their own private enclaves with firewalls around them to be cyber-secure inside that system. What a MEDCOY is, is inside the electronic health record and all the medical equipment that feeds in directly into that electronic health record will all be inside the same enclave. That enclave must include the locations that are deployable locations. So then how do we do the infrastructure that allows, whether wireless or wire, interaction inside that enclave to allow operational capability in both the stateside and deployed environments? It's a multi-year process to be able to get there. In the interim, we need some sort of health information exchange that's effective in the operational environment. The TMIJ, the current operational platform, isn't very, isn't very good. And so we know that we need to continue to put money against it to maintain TMIJ while we're developing JOMA. But we're not going to risk the future to maintain extra funds into TMIJ to make it live long and delay what would be an exceptional improvement in the way that we deliver healthcare in the operational environment. So that's what we're setting the priorities. Maintain just enough in TMIJ, boy, put monies against JOMA to get there better and faster, okay? Yes, ma'am.
You may have just answered part of my question, but this is a convoluted question. And I'm going to start by directing a comment to the lady in the back with the sick kid.
Sure.
And then I'll get back to you. And I know, I know your focus is short, but I'm a nurse. I'll go through it, Doc. My name is Rachel Meyer. I am a registered nurse contracted to work in the emergency department at Fort Smith Naval, and I'm also contracted to work at the TRICARE Prime Clinic in Suffolk. And to the lady in the back at Suffolk, just so that you know, we have a pediatric clinic and an adult clinic. It's a 20-minute drive from Norfolk. And I believe almost every single day, we have same-day appointments. That might be an option for you. And you spoke of sitting in the room and waiting for your doc for 30 to 45 minutes. And this is how I'm going to segue to you. While you're sitting there waiting, we are scrubbing charts. When you make an appointment, your chart is scrubbed like a week out, and then it's scrubbed on a daily basis to look for things that we need to tell you to do. Are you due for a PAP? Are you due for a mammogram? Things like that to remind you to make those appointments. But all of that takes some time. And the reason that I am segueing to you with my question is to let you know that doing that, you talked about administrative complexity and solving that issue. When I go to work at the TRICARE Prime Clinic, I have to sit with four different operating systems open on my computer in order to scrub a chart and comprehensively provide information to the provider to take care of a patient. I have to, I have to look at Alta. I have to, they've been to the emergency department. I have to open T-systems. I have to open CHDS to see results. I have to open up Patient Portal, Read A Nelt to talk to a patient via secure messaging. I have to go to Centrus to see admissions things. When I'm in the emergency department, also, working inside the emergency department, I have T-systems. I can't order off that. I can't see results off that. And I will be honest with you, there are quite a few nurses who don't even look for results, and that slows down patient care. I should be able to have all of that in one comprehensive medical record. And my question to you is, why don't you just write a check for enter?
So my reason, the first of which, because we write a wonderful check for Cerner.
Try again.
Now, I'll tell you, may I, I won't get into the source selection discussions because those will always be private, right? In acquisition environment, source selection will always be private. But I'll tell you that of all the organizations that did on the new electronic health record contract that was won by Cerner, a significant discriminator was who owns the data. And the only company that allowed the DOD to own the data was Cerner.
Then my question to you is going to be, is this going to be all-inclusive? And when is it going to happen? When is it going to happen?
It's happening.
When's it going to happen for me?
Well, I feel willing to move to the Pacific Northwest. It'll happen today. For this particular location, you know, so my guess is it's probably a couple of years away from here. The plan is to have every site across the entire world done by 2024. I'm sorry, I don't know the answer. Yeah, we can get to the answer, but my guess is going to be in the 2022, 2023. 22? 2022 for this area. We're on the third wave now. As the waves go, right now they're a fair amount of time apart. As we get more and more, back solid, this will start to move more and more. It's a wave sort of program. But yes, Epic, or Epic, the Cerner Millennium Platform. Yes, Epic does do all that. But so does the Cerner Millennium Platform. Now, there are some who say it's not user-friendly because the Epic program, and I'll argue with that. Those that are using the Cerner Millennium Program or MHS Genesis are actually very happy with it. After they've used it for a few weeks, almost no one is happy with the new electronic health record when they first start using it. Almost none. But if you, in particular, not Pacific Northwest, but if you ask the folks at Travis Air Force Base, for example, or Naval Hospital La Mora, they'll tell you this is a relatively simple thing, and they're glad that they have the MHS Genesis now, the Cerner Millennium Platform there. That's the feedback I'm getting. Not perfect. Not that there was a challenge as a social role in that, but it went pretty well.
General John Meyer, Commander Navy Warfarth Development Command. First, I've got a good news story. I had a very minor procedure today of giving blood. It took me longer to walk into the building than it did to get blood. I wasn't there more than 10 minutes. Granted, that's operational Navy, and that was not flag privilege of doing that. It was incredibly quick and responsive. I appreciate your insights into the discussion about calling services, if you will, from some locations. Does the operational Navy get a vote in that? In particular, does Admiral Brady? Or do the operators get a cut on that before a decision is definitized? And I ask that purely because of the direct impact of operational reviews.
Yeah, no, that's a great question. Let me explain how the process works. So across the 450 medical centers, hospitals, and clinics across the military health system, Health Affairs, the Assistant Secretary of Defense for Health Affairs, put a list of the services that they thought met a series of criteria that enabled a potential look to be acted. The services received that list and said, yes, no, we agree that they should be acted. For those that there was agreement from both Health Affairs and the services, Health Affairs mostly went to those locations and interacted with the medical leaders and interacted with the communities, interacted with the senior commanders at those locations to get feedback about what was important or the challenges that perhaps the data wouldn't show accurately, that sort of thing. All that was brought back to the preliminary report. At each specific location, the Assistant Secretary, along with the Undersecretary of Defense for Priscilla Naravas, put that on the table for the Vice Chiefs of Staff, Vice Chief of Naval Operations, and the Undersecretaries to get feedback. This is what we think. What do you think? And they had input into the decision-making at that point. There was a few facilities that there was not universal agreement between the entire line and Secretariat Department and OSD. Those were taken off the table for further study. For all those that there was universal agreement, yes, this seems like a reasonable plan to start. Again, not to finish, but we did it. It's got to work. But this is, these are the ones that we believe there's a reasonable plan. So the answer to that is yes, that's the way that it happened. Does that make sense? Okay, thanks for the question. Yes, ma'am.
Good morning, gentlemen, Navy spouse, and thank you for coming out today. My question is about EFMP program, and it's twofold. As you may know, Norfolk is one of the EFMP fleet concentrated areas where you get your families. So the first question I had, are there plans to keep EFMP coordinators at the RTS? Or would they be moving out into the community? And number two, you were speaking about working with community providers to make sure there's at least 200% availability for our families, particularly in specialties. So as you know, with EFMP, we do see a lot of special providers such as developmental pediatricians, current AC HKE, there's an eight to 12-month waitlist, among other specialties as well. Has there been thought or considerations of bumping up that number of 200% because of the fact that we are in fleet concentrated areas for EFMP?
Okay, that is a great question. So there's no plan to remove the EFMP coordinators from the facilities? So, there's no plan to remove the EFMP coordinator from the facilities? That's not a position of the Defense Health Agency. Each of the services do it just a little bit differently, so at some point or another there will be some changes to it because we're going to standardize it, so that no matter where you go, the process is going to be the same, and try to take best of each of the service's current plans, and then be transparent about why we're changing to what the standardized program's going to be. So I, so I said, yes, it's going to remain, but with that caveat, we'll standardize over time. The second part is the continued challenge. EFMP, there's medical input into it, and there's legal input into it, but it's largely a personnel decision. No awareness, right? That's a driver, this is personal actions. Because the service wants to move a particular service member from one location to another, so the EFMP program is, okay, what services are available for that particular family at that particular location? So we're advisory on that. I won't deny that, that in some locations, we don't do a very good job of explaining what the challenges are for that particular family member, and what has to be available at the gaining location to be able to support that. That's on us as a healthcare community team. So I'll take that on, but we need to do better at that. And that's across the services, there's no location that's particularly good or particularly bad, we're just sort of average across the board on that. But ultimately, ladies and gentlemen, this is a command decision. And so personnel, so I don't know the name of your old personnel system, so I'll use Arronius, Arronius Human Resources Command ultimately makes the decision on that. And, and generally, the way that it works is the feedback that we provide and the personnel command provide to the gaining location is, hey, you want this person? This is the challenge associated with having that person there, do you still want him? And ultimately, ladies and gentlemen, that's why commanders can act. Commanders make decisions about what are the ramifications of having that particular person and the challenges associated with that family. So there are many, there are many cases that perhaps we don't do a good enough job of explaining the ramifications of what that will mean to that family, but we're advisory only from the healthcare team when it comes to EFMP. Advisory. Because commanders make decisions. And that's, that's just a wrap. Now, if there are ways that we can fix that, and for those of you who haven't followed the news lately, there's congressional hearings on this right now. Because there's a belief across our system that for whatever reason, we're not doing enough to be able to solve the problem that you're talking about. And I'm not saying that there haven't been significant challenges with multiple families about this particular issue, so I'll agree to it, we need to get better. But it's not just a medical thing, it's, it's a personnel thing, supported significantly by medical, and we have to get better at it. So, I'll agree that with you, we're working with the Congress on ways that we possibly could do that, they're asking us for drafting assistance, which means we help them write laws about how that might work, but it's a complex problem, we agree to more needs to be done. Yes, ma'am?
Okay, so, this kind of goes back to a couple of questions.
Oh, no, I'm worried that you got a listen.
So, because Congress may say that by practice, they're going to take any federal health, that they accept a percentage of their patient population as Medicare patients, why can't Congress say in promoting medicine? If you're going to, because we're select, just like if we decided to pay the community to pay that six kids at a time, how would I, I, so? But it's even worse because we built that into our budget, that if they're going to accept any federal healthcare office, why can't Congress, you and Congress, do this in the end?
Yeah, so, well, they could. I think the reasons perhaps they don't is they're very specific about what they require people to do. So for example, if you take any sort of federal funding that you have to take Medicare, okay, but we don't tell them how much Medicare patients they have to take, they just have to be able to take it. Similar if they sign up for Tricare, again, right now there's nothing in the law that says how much of that patient population has to be Tricare.
So is there a, is there a minimum cost that they have to take from Medicare?
They don't have to take anybody. They don't have to take anybody from Medicare. It's just that if, if someone is enrolled for them, for example, if they've got a relationship with a primary care patient that happens to be Medicare, their, their moral responsibility, I don't know about legal, I think legal, but for sure moral responsibility is until they've handed that patient off to somebody else, they're responsible for it.
Okay, so there is.
But there's no, no man. No man.
Okay, so maybe Congress can work on it, because they're going to take care of that patient. Cerner, especially if it's really dollars, multiple dollars, every year.
So I don't, I don't disagree with you. So we also, whenever we talk to the Congress about legislative things, we're asked them to think about all of the downsides. So if the down, so if the Congress said, if you're going to take Tricare, at least 5% of your, of your PAP, or at least 15%, whatever the number is, so what if you don't want to do that? What's your other choice?
None.
Not take it at all. And so the challenge that, that we believe would be significant for those who just have a few Tricare patients, they're going to say, yeah, I don't want you all. And now we think we have significant capability, even if it's just ones, threes, or fives, or a dozen here or there, that's all going to go away.
Sir, I would say that your practices currently are that already.
I, I think you're right. I'm not, so don't get me wrong, I don't think that's a bad idea, I just, the unintended consequences of, of good action sometimes are profound.
Of course, I just, I think I may have assumed that there was a minimum, because doctors, doctor offices do talk about their minimum that they will take, or is something the number of manufacturers, 10%, 8%, or 15%?
Yeah, I'm not worried about that.
Maybe they are set.
I, I'm willing to look into it, in particular our Tricare team to look into it, to see if there's something we can use as a forcing function. But the last thing that I want is somehow putting some money in my Georgia boards, sorry. Some limit on it, and then have a significant amount of our, our Tricare malaccepting practitioners say, well, the heck with you then, if you're going to make me take 10% of you, for I already know I'm losing money on it, every patient that yours that I see, and the heck with it, I can't keep my product solvent if I take that percentage of orders.
Okay, so the next thing is to address spouse, and this is probably the holding spouse question, or concern. I think a lot of times, as spouses, we get in ranked in military medicine, and being seen at a military defense facility, and then when we have to go out of town, the fact that we have to wait 40 minutes in a doctor's office, that's going to happen, that happens in civilian medicine all the time. I would actually solicit everybody, if you calculate your wait time at Walgreens for $0 per day, and your wait time at NSMB for a two hour wait time, as your policy would take your best bet for your money, is go to Walgreens, or go out of town. It's, it's not as bad as it seems, I guess is my opinion. And I understand there's concerns for some of our families, that in, in military medicine, we need to do a better job of educating, or marketing, or helping to get the process of, when they get find out, that this is really the possibility of medicine, right?
Yeah, it is. So I, my co-organist or fellowship was in the Tricare practice world, so I'm very familiar with how that part of the world works. But this much I'll say to you, every single, since you made it to all of the spouses, I'll say to all of the spouses, every single quality metric that you can possibly measure, military health system, on average, is, is better than that. You just have to know that. The quality of care that's delivered inside our system is extraordinary. But your experience is your experience, you couldn't care less what the numbers are. Right? It's all about that one time. So the challenge that we have, first, by the way, maybe you noticed me, the number is 9.5 million. And so the opportunity to get that wrong, anecdotally, is extraordinary. Right? But, but the goal should obviously be to be extraordinary for every person, every time. Isn't that the goal? Shouldn't it be the goal at least? Well, as long as I'm the DHA director, that's the goal. But what we have to figure out then is, how can we make you an informed consumer? This is the quality that you're going to receive inside the EFMP for this service. This is the average wait time for the pharmacy, whatever it is, perhaps even by the 10 minute increment, so that you can plan your day, if it's, you have a choice about when you want to pick up your prescriptions, maybe that may give you some information for you. So, when I talk about administrative, patient facing administrative services, that's, those are the things I'm talking about. So did you know, this is the quality of the outpatient primary care, this is the quality of our birthing center, this is the quality of surgical care at this particular facility, this is what the wait times are for laboratory, this is what the wait times are for seat, whatever it is, so that you can make informed decisions about it. And then if you're asked somebody downtown, what will they'll tell you? Well, we don't measure that. Okay, that means it's a crap shoot for you if you're going downtown. Now, in some people's experiences, maybe it will be that, and maybe it will be, but you should be able to be informed, this is what it is here. Is this amount of time, wait time at the pharmacy, is it worth it, knowing that the safety checks that we're doing behind, and the fact that it's all of Medicare inside our own electronic health record, so we have everything available to help your clinical team take care of it? Is it worth it to you?
And I'm, I'm not assuming that's the thing. All of this is just a long thing, and it's a thing that, but what I'm saying is, we have to do a better job at making online, that it's sometimes is confusion over how people are, or maybe if you don't have to, maybe I should never do it, because you've got to work on one, you've got to work, you've got to, so if you want, instead of going to the primary care position and waiting all of that time, to go just to.
Sure. And in deference to my, my new friend here in the front row, that's where we have our nurse advice line.
Right. Yes.
And this? So there's a complex problem that's happening that, that you're at home, you're, you're a nurse mom, even though you're not a trained nurse, so how, what's there to help you make decisions? That's actually the reason that we have our nurse advice line, to help you decide which way anyways to go. Sometimes it's, oh, yeah, this is going to be okay, maybe a clinical appointment for tomorrow, and that's all right. Other times it's going to be, no, no, go to your primary care, and don't even go to urgent, or urgent care center, go to the ED and go there now.
Exactly.
That's why we have that problem, because that's a key skill set that our extraordinary registered nurses can do.
I think there's something that doesn't do on all of us, because that's, and, and we need to, anyone who has a question, it's a very.
Okay, so I, I just agree, I can get back, it's on our website, how easy is it to find the nurse advice line on our website, so you know where to go, so you can make the phone call and get the great advice?
Number one, any more questions? Sorry, we have three questions.
Three, okay.
The group is going to wrap it up, and if anybody has any questions, if you're not getting answers, there are a link when you enter, sure, you could submit questions. If you submit a question on that link, input your email address, so we can get the response back to you. So in your question, leave the email address you like your response, or a phone number if you'd like to be called, leave that into that message, we'll make sure your questions get answered either.
Yeah, so we'll answer it, that's the thing. And in the, in the question, put on it if you only want it answered to you, or if you want it answered to everybody, just like the Tricare question. Because if, if you want a lot of answers to you, then we'll do that, but otherwise, we're going to make the answer available to everybody. So three questions, correct? Okay?
Good morning, sir. My name is H. One Finley, and I'm here representing Joint Base Little Creek. And my question is for prioritization of the rescope thing. Is there any priority based on specialty for when they do rescope, or if they decide to rescope, well, could be prioritized? My specific concern, the mental health areas, as you know, we've had kind of some issues in this area over the last year, like the higher numbers, and the access to care for mental health in this area is a real struggle.
Yeah, so, all specialties are being considered, there are some that are, that are critical awareness ones, and behavioral health is one of them. A second, you could say it's behavioral health, you could say it's primary care, you could say it's neurology, but it's TBI care, how we handle the TBI care at particular locations. So those are sort of hot topic issues, because there's so challenging for us in one three houses. So if, if optometrist is your issue, I get it, it's not that optometrist isn't less important, it's just generally speaking, optometrist is pretty easy to find. Behavioral health is pretty challenging to find, and in particular, TBI care is pretty hard to find. So we're putting extra focus on those two things. Yes, ma'am? You're welcome. Yeah?
Good morning, sir. I'm only here morning as a front row. This evening in Little Creek, as a former, I personally came from, we, I went through the MEC process, access with Air Force and Army. As you know, through my career, is there any plans to continue with training, joint lives with the other branches, I like to put together the medical specialty of the main business.
Yes, yeah. So the, the stuff that is happening already in the military, the medical education and training campus, the MECs, there is plans to continue that. The, the second part of it though is Phase Two programs, so what is Phase Two enlisted programs for, or graduate nursing education, graduate medical education, to do more of that jointly. In general, right now, you go where your service goes. But we're looking at other opportunities, where is there a particular service that has a challenge, find enough places for that continuing education for this particular skill set within all the environments that that service has, is there ways that we can do it more jointly in other locations? So both of those things we think are happening, are going to happen, does that answer your question?
Yes, sir. And one other question, EFMP, you and my wife, our sons, in the category of I, EFMP, and we've experienced struggles of trying to find, like, developed pediatricians actually, and we were told that our provider is actually retiring at the end of the month and not being replaced. Is that pretty much going to be complacent, to restructure it back to our operational basis?
Well, not on the positions of Defense Health Agency, our, our mission is that if we continue with those services, unless directed by the secretary to de-scope, we'll continue with those services everywhere that we're currently doing. That said, my responsibility as the director of the DHA is to look at the, at the scope of services everywhere on an ongoing basis. And if, based on decisions of where the military puts service members or faculties, or based on where we decide to retire all of us who are retired, if there's significant changes in the populations, then my responsibility is to put the resources where they should be. So if there's significant personal de-scoping, then we're going to look at the resources that we have. If there's a whole bunch of more stuff that comes to a location, active family member or retirees, then we got to do the same sort of thing. So I'm still going to be rebalancing things, but it won't be in the nature of huge de-scoping that may or may not be happening based on what the secretary decides. Where's last question?
Right here, sir. My chief quarters, I work for the commander of Navy Services Post of Atlantic. First of all, I'd like to thank the 14 for hosting you today, and I would really like to just say thank you for your tenure, your transparency, your passion for this comes through, I don't think anybody would ever doubt your commitment to helping families and others. So, I just want to say thank you personally, but my question involves sort of oversight, and we've sort of hit it around on this, and your passion for ensuring quality of care. We recently have come through the public-private venture housing sort of issue, where we realized that as a service, we didn't do enough to ensure that we were making sure our family was taking care of each patient. Now, military health happens in first civilians, as we start to transition family members perhaps off the network, not necessarily a public-private, but it was pretty similar. I'd like to know who owns that oversight for that care, and what mechanisms we're going to put in place to ensure that it happens, so that we don't do what we did with the public-private.
Sure.
And then more specifically, what's at the unit level? Okay? For unit commanders to be able to access that thing.
Okay. All right, so I've got to answer all this. So the one belly button, responsibility is me. Because my, my, my organization, the Defense Health Agency, is responsible for the Tricare contracts. So the one belly button, that would be me. From a capability perspective, there are some similarities with the housing, but I'll argue that in many cases, they're different. My personal belief from the services is, we made contracts with folks and thought that managing housing units was actually very easy, and so it didn't require a lot of oversight, which is going to be okay, because it just happens. But, but there's nobody in the Defense Health Agency who doesn't understand how emotional healthcare is. So there's nobody who's thinking, that's all going to be okay, you don't really have to keep an eye on it, everything's going to be, everything's going to be glorious, and the healthcare's performance, in fact, every single place that we contract with downtown has our best interest in heart, so we don't have to manage. But nobody thinks that. Not in my organization, certainly not of you think that, the Congress doesn't think that way. By the way, I get hauled up in front of the Congress every month to give an update on what's happened in the military health system, where the challenges, what might go about us, every single month, I get hauled up before the Armed Services Committee to give an update. So I don't think that anyone will allow what's happened to be allowed to happen with healthcare. That's the first part of it. Second part of it really is, it all has to do with metrics. And if you ask any of our senior leaders, well, what were the metrics that you were following to ensure that the quality of the housing was going to be excellent? What do you think they'll tell you? Well, most of them will tell you none, and some of them will look at the actual contracts, and are some limited quality, performance requirements in those contracts, but they're pretty limited, pretty easy to achieve. Well, this is the fifth iteration of the Tricare contracts, and I'm just, I'm here to tell you, there are extraordinary things inside these Tricare contracts that allow us to kick out of these, to, to see inside the access, to see inside quality, to see inside drive card, to see inside the your comments, the patients' action comments, even when it's the care downtown, we get all that stuff. And if there's a particular practitioner that, and if you like, whether they're willing to take you or not, we take them out. We have, we have that capacity to do that. It's not just all, well, they're willing to take your TRICARE money, therefore they're in the system. That's not the case. If you tell us that somebody's awful, then they're out. And we got to clear out another way. If mine, I only care at good access within reasonable drive times for all of them. That's the responsibility that I take on, that's the responsibility that the Defense Health Agency takes on, irrespective of who's the leader. And I will just tell you all this, I mean, you mentioned my passion. Ah, it's not my passion, it's our passion. And if you talk to any of the young men and women who are working inside our facilities, they all feel like I do. Now, we love what I do. We love what we do. I love what I do, we love what we do. Because in that, it's great. It's fantastic, it's such a privilege to be a member of the healthcare delivery team in America. At large, it is a privilege to have you tell us the things that you tell us and the things that you allow us to do to your body with, with sharp instruments or voices or that sort of thing to help make you better. See, you're laughing about that, I'm a general servant, think about it. You invite me to take a really sharp instrument, big huge holes in you, stir stuff up inside, and put you back together again, and it's going to be okay. Think about that for a second. That's extraordinary trust on your part. And it's, I just, in my soul, that's an extraordinary privilege to be allowed to do that for you. So we talk about the privilege of medicine, and that's the way that I think about it. Now, and on top of that, the fact that we're doing that for America's best to include my kids. My babies. And if we can't love that, I don't know what you can love. It's just what I find out I would believe. So when it comes to begging, well, I beg to get the best and the brightest out of the community to work with us, that's what it takes, I'll beg. But collectively, that's what this has worked to me. And my goal, at least while I'm the Director of Defense Health Agency, is to move our agency in that direction so that we make it worth the sacrifice that you and your families are living through in order to make America the greatest place in the world for them, to ensure freedom across the world. That's what we do, that's what I'm doing for. So all of you, whether you're uniformed or family member, thanks for your service. I mean that from the bottom of my heart.
So one takeaway from me today is that it's all about transparency of communication, right? Up, down, and across the chain of command, whether it's the general taking time out of his busy day to come down and walk us through what will be a complicated and challenging transformation, or on EFT, tell us what needs to be fixed, and we'll help us feed back to you so that we can get better at providing the service that we need to the total force, whether it's those of us in uniform, the active component, the reserve component, our civilian shipmates, or our retirees. So again, thank you for being a role model in transparent communication up in there. So thanks for listening.